Council work session to order, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Steelgrave?
Here.
Vining? Germaine?
Here.
Stringham?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Hayder?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. So, I guess next item clerk is?
Is public comment.
This is a work session, there won't be decisions at the work session that would make appear later in the, on the agenda, which it is, if there's discussion depending how the work session goes. That said, the work session is about the proposed fireworks ordinance, continued discussion. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding this item or other items? Any, yes, sir. We just asked you to state your name, jurisdiction of residence, and your comments this evening. Mindful of the three minutes, please.
Thank you. Dale DeSlover, 211 North Macomb Street. I wanted to address the issue that the last workshop I was at when I asked for your consideration to apply for a SEMCOG grant, planning grant for the Build a Bridge Across the River. You know, I know I'm not going to come here and tell you how to run meetings because I know you've run a lot of them, but I'm going to tell you that the way that meeting was run, I hope it doesn't work out for you like that again because there was a different issue on that meeting. If you had a workshop and Manik and Smith was here and they were presenting an issue to you, you would hear them, you'd hear the proposal, and then you would ask them questions along the way and have conversation to get your questions answered. In this case, I presented for three minutes and then you discussed back and forth. And at one point, I wanted to interject something and you said, "It's not public comment time." At that point, I should have been treated just as if I was Manik and Smith, I feel. Because you had a lot of questions that didn't have answers and I could have given you those answers. The, I've watched that meeting too, I told Bob, I've watched that meeting too many times. I've lost sleep over that meeting. There were things that were sad that I would have corrected you on. One thing was they're going to, could build the bridge over North Custer and land on the north side of the road. That would have never happened. There was a comment that said, "You don't know who's going to be coming across that bridge from Monroe Township." This isn't the southern border. It wasn't, it's not an issue of who's coming across that bridge. Just recently, and there was a, there was an item that I heard from different people that said that there were people at the city that were saying that that bridge would cost $5 to $7 million. That was really inappropriate for anybody to be saying that. Just recently, Plainfield Township in Michigan approved a $2.2 million project. Part of that project is going to be building a 175-foot bridge, 10-foot wide steel bridge, at a cost of $880,000. So if you double that approximately, you're talking a bridge that might have been $1.8 million. We'll never know now. Unless the city council, unless the city planning department goes to somebody and asks for a, to get a projection, we'll never know. So for saving $22,000 that the city would have had to spend on that project, I'm thinking we'll never know. I'm 77 years old. I've been around since the 60s and the 70s when urban renewal was first talked about in the city of Monroe. I know how many plans have been paid for and drawn up that are sitting somewhere on the shelf someplace that nothing was ever done for. So spending $22,000 on a plan that I think would have gotten done, $22,000 would have been peanuts. So I was very disappointed in the city council that they did not apply for that planning grant. Though you were talking about you had a current three- to five-year plan and this would affect that. Bob knows that that's not true. You put something out today, start something today, by the time it gets approved, it'll be five to six years before you'll see a shovel in the ground. So it wouldn't affect your three-year plan, your five-year plan. That's about what I have to say on that, but I wanted to say another thing because I know it's something you're working on. And I've been reading about it, painting the crosswalks. I'm not against painting the crosswalks. I just, my suggestion would be, before you paint them, paint the white lines. The white lines in the paint, they have glass beads in them. Those glass beads make the lines reflective. I've just read in the last week, where in the state of Florida, the state of California, they have painted crosswalks. They're making them take them out because they're not in compliance with the, with uniform traffic code. So I know this isn't state roads, I know it's not the city of Monroe roads, but my suggestion would be, paint the white lines and then do the painting in between. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from those present here this evening? Seeing none. Clerk, next item is?
The next item is, under the work session agenda, item 5393, proposed fireworks ordinance continued discussion.
Thank you, Manager Robinson, item for this evening's discussion.
Yes, Your Honor and counsel, we have, since the last work session, we've, we took what the information that you gave you, that you gave us. We went back, we've researched deeper and further with both the Public Safety Department and Department of Economic Development. And we have come up with a draft of what we believe an appropriate ordinance would be. And Mark, Director Cochrane here would be, like to go through that. As you know, you were also sent a copy on Thursday so you could review it, look through it. And this is the time where, you know, we drafted this ordinance based on the information that you gave us and also the information that we received internally administratively from our citizens as they called to complain about fireworks and what, you know, during our, that fireworks to 4th of July time. And this is how we drafted this, and this is for yours to consider. We're hoping to get some, some positive and, and different kind of feedback on our ordinance here. And we feel that we put it on the actual action agenda on our regular council meeting agenda to where if you feel that it, that it's appropriate, if there's not any major changes, then we would like to go forth and put it on the first reading. However, if the results of this work session is that, then at the beginning of the next meeting, I would pull that agenda for our meeting in order to rework the ordinance based on the information you give us tonight. But first, I think Mark can kind of explain and break this down and walk us through because there's a lot of terms developed by the states, there's a lot of terms developed by pyrotechnics and all this. And I think it's important that we understand what those mean. Mark?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Clerk Treasurer Lavoy. This evening, as the city manager indicated, we do have a proposed ordinance for consideration this evening based on the work session that we had right after the 4th of July, where we got feedback and questions from you. And I'll say, I recognize the struggle that we had at the last meeting with trying to view everything on the small screen in front of you. So we did print out everything for you this evening to follow along and hopefully everything's a little bit bigger and easier to read. But just as a reminder for you and those who may be watching, in 2011, Public Act 256 was signed that took effect on Janu- or January 1st, 2012. And this regulated the sale, distribution, possession, use, and ignition and discharge of fireworks in the state of Michigan. Within the act, they differentiate fireworks within three categories. One is display fireworks, one is consumer fireworks, actually four, and one is low-impact fireworks. And then also, there's a category called novelties that we'll go through this evening with some specific examples. But on the screen is the flyer that was put out by the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. And you've got a larger copy of that tonight that shows examples of those different categories. So first, display fireworks. So display fireworks are typically not the fireworks that you can buy in the tent at the Meyer parking lot or at the, the larger fireworks outlet stores that are open year-round. Display fireworks are more the professional pyrotechnic displays with some examples that you see on the screen. These really have to be specially ordered. And through the U.S. Department of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, they also regulate these because they are considered a higher class of explosives, given the composition and makeup of explosive materials that they have. And so you'll see, these are typically shot out of ground-mounted cannons. And as you see, they look more, more professional than marketable or saleable. And then we also, just some different examples, different photos. These are typically what you would see as part of major fireworks shows. The ones that go much higher in the air, they have a much wider arc once they explode within the air as well. The typical grand finale that you would see as part of larger fireworks shows that are put on by pyrotechnic professionals. Consumer fireworks could sometimes look the same, however, they're marketed differently. And these are some examples off the TNT website. These are generally ones that leave the ground. These are ones that are audible devices and aerial devices is the different differentiation between consumer fireworks and low-impact fireworks. So these can be single-use cannons or single-use tubes that are on the ground. There's also the rockets that go up into the air, the ones that make a very high-pitched whistle or an explosion sound once they leave the ground and explode in the air. So they can look just like this. So some may confuse these consumer fireworks with professional or display fireworks, but these are the slide before. The TNT, the four that you see in the middle that say 100, these are what they actually look like when they explode in the sky. Again, aerial devices and audible devices. Consumer fireworks also include classes such as firecrackers, the firecrackers that you see on, on the display. They're smaller explosives, they're, but they, they do make a sound when they explode. It also includes bottle rockets, Roman candles, because again, they go up into the air and they're also audible. And so these are governed, as the city manager indicated, by the state of Michigan. And they really look to the definition, regulations, and recommendations of the American Pyrotechnic Association. And if you dig into their, their handbook and their recommendations, it really goes by the weight and the composition of them, but also the category that we, that we described too. So these are consumer fireworks. Low-impact fireworks are pretty much ones that stay on the ground and they don't make a noise. So these are things like the, the fountains. You'll see, they come in different shapes. The, the one in the middle can look kind of confusing because it's called a mini-California rocket fountain, but that stays in the ground. It does not go into the air even though it looks like a rocket. But that's considered a fountain. Here's some other examples that are, that are available at retailers for consumers to purchase as well. It also includes things like bloom flowers and spinners. So on the left side of the screen, these are pyrotechnic articles that you can buy at around the 4th of July in the tents and things of that sort. They stay on the ground, but they're mounted and they spin, as opposed to the aerial spinners that go up in the air and spin and make noise. These either stay on the ground and just produce light effect and spin, or like you see that little Ferris wheel on the screen as well, that stays on the ground and also just spins and make a, makes a pyrotechnic display. And then there's what's called novelties. And in the state act, in Public Act 256, it prohibits local units of government from regulating novelty fireworks at all. And so these are things that we are not allowed to regulate the use and discharge of, period. The, they, I guess the confusion that comes in the act is, the act says, nothing in this act allows local units of government to regulate novelties. However, that doesn't say local units of government cannot, it just says, nothing in the act permits us. So one of the things we have to look at is other state laws, and we've been working with the city attorney's office on this. Are there other opportunities if we desire to? But generally, these are the more low, lower-class of fireworks. These are handheld fireworks like sparklers. There are the poppets, the little pops that you pop on the ground and they make a snapping sound. Smoke balls, magic snakes, the Mr. Turtle, exploding coal. Really, they, they just have more comical names to it. The lower right-hand one, I know was popular, the exploding zombie poop is another term. But these are more classification of novelties because they're not necessarily considered explosives. Any questions about the different categories and classes?
Questions, Andrew?
I see that on the handout that we've been provided, under legal low-impact fireworks on the left, it lists sparklers and sparkle trees. And then at the bottom, under novelties, it also lists sparkling devices. And then in the slide, it refers to sparklers as novelties. And under low-impact fireworks, it says handheld sparkling devices under low-impact fireworks. So depending on where you're looking, the categorization is different in several different places. I'm just looking for some clarification.
As am I. I'll say, it's confusing when you read the American Pyrotechnic Association guide. Typically, as low-impact consumer fireworks, wire sparklers are devices that consist of a metal wire or wood dowel that has been coated with pyrotechnic composition. Upon ignition, the tip of the device, a shower of sparks is produced. Sparklers may contain up to 100 grams of pyrotechnic composition per item. Certain wire sparklers and dipsticks are considered as novelties under this section. And then, of course, it refers you to a different section where the, I will say, the definition is pretty much the same. So I guess sparklers are the ones where there is a little bit of challenge in what's considered a novelty and what's considered a low-impact consumer. Pretty much, they have the same composition of a metal wire or wood dowel, up to 100 grams of composition of pyrotechnic material. Iron fillings produce the spark effect. Color-producing sparklers use potassium perchlorate as an oxidizer. And so sparklers must be packaged in inner packaging that contain eight devices or less. So it really doesn't talk about the difference between a low-impact versus a novelty. Generally, most communities are treating sparklers as a novelty.
Okay. Can we just make the determination that sparklers be considered a novelty and be done with it? Or does, there was something in there about 100 grams. Does weight have to do, because I know there's the small ones that are about yay and then they can be larger as well, and maybe there's the distinction is weight and size.
It talks about the 100-gram limit in both the low-impact and the novelty. So it's-
It's wonderful, the clarity is, is wonderful.
And this one is a little difficult, yep. Other questions on the categorization? Okay. So as a reminder as well, Public Act 256 does allow local units of government to regulate the use of consumer fireworks. And there's, that's, there's an important note there that we'll talk about when we get into the draft ordinance. Consumer fireworks, except for on the following days after 11 o'clock. So we're not allowed to regulate consumer fireworks on New Year's Eve until 1:00 a.m. on New Year's Day, Saturday and Sunday before Memorial Day until 11:45, and the same with Labor Day, June 29th through July 4th until 11:45, and then also July 5th, if it's on a Friday or Saturday. So in the proposed ordinance this evening, we do add low-impact to consumer fireworks, the definition. So local units of government, we do prohibit, or prohibit the use of low-impact or consumer fireworks, I'm sorry. Consumer fireworks and low-impact fireworks, except for on these days.
If I can, that is all Fridays and Saturdays until 11:00 p.m.?
So we'll, we'll get there in one moment, too.
Yeah, because I was like, I kind of heard this and then I heard Nan, so I think what you're saying is, I'll wait to hear more.
So the ordinance, the, the language says it's, it's unlawful for any person to ignite, discharge, or use consumer fireworks on those days. And then we also add in prohibition of using low-impact fireworks on days outside of those days where it's permitted by state law, except for Fridays and Saturdays until 11:00 p.m. So what the ordinance is in essence saying is, we are following the state law, we are prohibiting the use of consumer fireworks outside those days where the state tells us we have to allow it, but we are going to allow low-impact fireworks, so those ground, non-audible fireworks on Fridays and Saturdays until 11:00 p.m. And this was a suggestion based on the feedback that we received at the last city council meeting about birthday celebrations or otherwise, where we still protect and allow for everybody's private use and peaceful use of their own property, but also for consideration of those special events allows people to use low-impact fireworks on Fridays and Saturdays until 11:00. So not during the week, not on Sundays, so Sundays through Thursdays, it would still be prohibited. And consumer fireworks, the ones that leave the air or leave the ground and those that make noise, would be prohibited even on Fridays and Saturdays through the rest of the year.
Questions, there's, Andrew?
There are a number of fountains I know that would fall into the low-impact category that I believe whistle. And I, it's not always clear which ones those are and are not, but that would contribute to some of the audible components that we're discussing.
Yeah. Generally, some of the fountains do whistle and we would permit those. So it's generally firecrackers, the ones that make an explosion sound, not the whistling sound, and those that leave the ground and go up into the air, that would be prohibited. Would be the general rule of thumb.
Well, any further, Andrew?
None on that item.
Kathy?
So I just want to do like a scenario. So I find a box of sparklers that I forgot at 4th of July, and my kids are home bored on a Tuesday afternoon. It would be against ordinance.
For novelty fireworks, yeah. Or not novelty, low-impact.
So a little sparkler that their kids are, are holding.
Sparklers are considered novelty and we are not allowed to regulate those.
Okay.
So like smoke bombs and turtles and those snakes and things of that sort, you would be allowed to do those on Tuesday afternoon because the state doesn't allow us to regulate those, period.
It goes back to the confusion of where they fall. So, thank you.
You know, I read that again, I think it is confusing because we understand what a sparkler is, individual sparkler. The picture, what's depicted here is a sparkle tree, which is going to be four or five at one time. And I think, I'm not saying that's the difference, I don't know, I've not purchased these before, I wouldn't know. But it says sparklers to begin, which I think is what the confusion is, where it says sparklers and sparkle trees. And maybe, and then I think in the novelty, it said sparkler devices or that are X number per pack. Whereas this might, I don't know how many is in one of these packets here. So I, it's a little confusing. I understand the ask and I understand Kathy's point is, you know, I have a sparkler, do I know which one is it and does it matter?
So, and also, if you look at the definition in the proposed ordinance of what are novelties, so these would be toy plastic or paper caps for toy pistols, glitter sparklers and paper tubes not exceeding 1/8 inch in diameter, and toy snakes not containing mercury. And then it also refers to the APA standards that I just referred to. So generally, a sparkler would be considered a handheld sparkling device. If you get into a sparkler tree where it's not handheld and it's on the ground and multiple, I guess, displays are contained in one device that's not handheld, there's where we would move into a low-impact category.
Well, if I can follow up.
Yeah, with Andrew.
I'm looking at line 44, under low-impact fireworks, ground in handheld sparkling devices.
Yes, but then, in addition to that, and this is where it does get a little confusing, you have to look at APA standard 87, 3.1, and 3.11 to 3.118. 3.2, 3.3, and 3.4 talk about aerial and audible devices. So while that, the low-impact definition, and these are taken right out of the state law, so we can't change the definition of state law in the state law, because sparkling devices are technically considered a low-impact, but they're also considered a novelty on one end. And I think, I don't want, I think we're talking about one specific type of firework. We're talking about sparklers and generally the ones that I think we're all thinking of that come in one device. And we all, you know, played with them on 4th of July. I think city council is that, we can- We can treat those as a novelty firework, as the state does. It gets into more the, I guess, the heavier-duty handheld sparkling devices where it gets a little more confusing. Certainly, I would rewrite the definitions if we could to be a little more clear, but because we do have to follow those definitions by the APA, that's where the challenge lies.
Other questions so far? All right.
How does council feel about allowing low-impact fireworks on Friday and Saturday nights until 11:00 p.m.?
Positively.
Okay.
Positively. I speak for me, I don't know.
So I guess what I think Mark's asking for is here, as we go through these, we're going through the different levels, and we get to low-impact and novelty. Obviously, as we've heard, novelty has to be permitted, you know, so we can do to change that. It's the low-impact ones. And then, is it the, is it every Friday and Saturday? Is it maybe less than every Friday, Saturday? Is it something, you know, before and after the regular fireworks displays that are permitted by the dates that are there? To Kathy's point, I realize I got something left over, and it's not something that is a consumer, because that'd be inappropriate to light off by this. But it's, it's stuff that falls within the low-impact, and well, we gotta wait till the weekend. I, you know, I don't want people storing stuff throughout the year either, but, so. But if you're around these dates, I'm more inclined to that, but I would take, I don't want this to be the thing that prohibits moving forward with some type of an ordinance either.
The other thing, if I may, Mayor, to note is Section E of the ordinance, and that same section, 348-2, Section E, we did mirror our recreational fire ordinance that says if you are on those Friday and Saturday nights to 11:00, if you are going to use low-impact fireworks, they can't be discharged on any deck or patio made of wood or other combustible material, or within 25 feet from any structure or combustible material. So that's the same language that city council adopted, and when we started allowing folks to have recreational fires in their backyard. However, in that ordinance, we say 15 feet, but for low-impact fireworks, because they can have a wider display. We moved it to 25 feet, not on a wood or combustible surface, and not within 25 feet of any structure or combustible surface, like a wooden fence, per se.
Thoughts? Questions? Kathy?
I'm okay with how it's worded. I'm just concerned, and I'm trying to think through how, how would people know? Because obviously, if you're going to enforce it, they're gonna constantly probably say they didn't understand it. So, and I'm not a user of fireworks, so that's probably where I'm coming from, a little bit of a deficit.
And I think part of that is the communications plan in which we roll that out. We're also going to, if, if council proceeds with adopting this ordinance, is work to develop a handout that would provide very clear examples. So sparklers, for example, that package that we showed on the novelty slide, that would be what would, we, we're not allowed to regulate those anyway, but we would treat those as a novelty firework. Generally, we would differentiate on that handout and classify which days they're allowed and which ones they're not, to help with that.
You know, I think when I was, when I was trying to wrap my head around the difference between consumer and low-impact fireworks, what really made a difference to me is any of these legal low-impact fireworks, I'm going to set off on my personal property at my house. And it's not going to affect the neighbor on the right, the neighbor behind me, and the neighbor, neighbor in front of me. So that's kind of how I differ. If it's contained within my own lot, that's kind of where it's contained. That's where consumer fireworks, the ones like we saw several weeks ago at 7th and Monroe that were, those affect other people who may not want to be affected. All that shrapnel or all the paper product and that that comes down on someone, the loud booms scare their animals, those kind of things, we have to be cognizant of those neighbors who don't want that. And I think that was what, how I wrapped my head around this. If whatever I'm doing in low-impact fireworks only impacts my yard, then I get it.
Other comments from council? Thoughts? I know we've got another part here to go through, which is about the permit application and that, but obviously, you know, reading through this, I think it's, you know, it's what, there's lines with the state law in fashions, and lines in the state law with what council's permitted to do. To me, it just comes down to the low-impact, and if we're going to allow them, which I'm not really opposed to them, it's, my question is, are we going to allow it every week? But I'm not, again, I'm not going to let that be the difference of moving something forward for me. I, I just try to see how every week is a necessity, but that's okay. And it's low-impact.
Sorry, Mayor.
Okay.
The other provision that we did add in 348-2 is where it talks about Section C, a person shall not ignite, this is the state law, and then we added language, the person shall not ignite, discharge, or use consumer fireworks on public property, school property. We also added low-impact fireworks, because right now, that's not addressed in the state law. So we're still saying low-impact fireworks, even on that Friday and Saturday, they still can't be in the street, they can't be on the sidewalk, they can't be in our public parks, they can't be on another person's property, they can't be on churches, schools. So we added that language as well.
Questions? I know we want to get through the entire item first. Okay, Mark?
Okay, so the last section really that varies from the state law, state allows us to issue permits for display fireworks shows. However, we have to use a form that is provided by the state of Michigan, and then we are allowed to charge a fee for that application, a non-refundable fee that the city would keep of 100% of that. And then, once they fill out that form, they have to name, it has to be either a city resident, or if they're not a city resident, they have to name a city resident as their legal representative who would be responsible. And then also, they have to submit, as the city determined, a financial responsibility or insurance, naming the city as additionally insured, at an amount that we decide. And then also, the local unit of government must rule on the competency and qualifications of the operator and the pyrotechnic. In this case, we left that responsibility to the city manager. So those are opportunities, or rights by state law that we have when granting display permits. We did add, within this provision, in addition to that form that has to be filled out, the state form, we do add a requirement that you have to provide a site plan that shows the property, as well as where they're going to be set off from, and then also a safety storage plan. So if you're setting them up in the morning, how are you going to keep them safe and store them until 10:30 that evening, or whatever the, the time may be? And then also, permission for the city to inspect, go onto private property and inspect the fireworks display to make sure that it's safe. And then the final thing that we did add, this was modeled off several different city ordinances, we do have the ability to collect and retain a fee. In this case, we are, in addition to the application fee, an upfront escrow deposit provision, where if somebody is proposing to have a large fireworks display, we're allowed to request upfront an amount that we think will cover police and fire and public services that may be needed in response. So the city manager has the ability to evaluate each display application and determine what that fee will be. If it's a larger display, obviously, it's going to be larger. We're going to probably want police and fire onsite at the time of the display to make sure nothing happens. And then for public services, if it doesn't clean, get cleaned up, if it, if it's being shot off on city property or lands on city property, and our parks or DPS crew have to go in and clean up the next day because the operator did not, we would be able to draw from that deposit the actual costs that were calculated from the services needed. Anything left would get returned back to the operator, and then if we don't need to use any of it, then we would return the full cost. If the cost exceeded the amount that we had requested to be in that escrow deposit, then we would issue an invoice that is due to be paid to the city to recover those costs that we had in association with the displays. So we do this already for all of our tournaments out at Munson Park. When we have a tournament, a softball tournament, a baseball tournament, we do have them pay upfront for the use, and then we calculate any costs, reduce that off the deposit, or the escrow deposit, return the fee, or we invoice them afterwards. So it's the same, just recouping the cost for, for these opportunities and privileges. So that's a display, display requests and permits.
So that's display and permit application. Questions on that from council? The structure that's being proposed? I think there's one more section.
Yep, the last section is violations. So the state law does prescribe, A, what different violations are. And so if you'll look in the proposed ordinance at Section 3, intentionally or recklessly damaging the property of another person, it's a misdemeanor punishable up to 90 days and a fine of not more than 500. The city sets that fine, but it can't be more than $500 by the state law. And then, if the person intentionally or recklessly causes litter or debris onto the property of another, to public property, it's a civil infraction punishable of a fine of up to $500. So those are prescribed by the state, we can't change those. Those are in effect whether we have a local ordinance or not. However, we do say, any of the other provisions of the ordinance, if somebody violates the ordinance, they would be responsible for municipal civil infraction and a fine of not more than $1,000, because that is the cap that we have by the state. And 500 of that is required to go to the public safety department.
Questions on this? Andrew?
In addition to the fine up to $500 or up to $1,000 in, in the case of Section C, I imagine that any property that is actually damaged would be followed up in small claims court or with an insurance company above and beyond the fine itself.
Correct. So if somebody sets off a firework and it lands on my garage and burns my garage down, I have my own civil recourse-
$500 fine from the city, plus whatever the, yeah.
Correct, yep.
All right.
It becomes civil, like you're saying, so. Other questions on this part? Other final comments, Mark, or points that you want to review again?
I don't think so, unless council has anything. In general, I understand the confusion around some of the actual specific devices, and certainly, I'd be happy to hand out APA 3.1 through 3.18 to differentiate. It is very specific, and we can list all that information and, and help with some of that clarity as well, in partnership with the public safety department, what would be a violation and what wouldn't be. In general, it's, if it's aerial and it makes a sound, it's a consumer. If it stays on the ground, produces light, it's a low-impact firework. If it's handheld or other novelties as described in the state law, it's something we can't regulate.
Questions for Mark or administration? So, I don't see any. Says, was stated earlier, it's, it is on our council agenda this evening for, just to read it first. It's an order-
It would be first reading and place, set the date for the public hearing.
So if, I guess if there's objections in significant fashion, I guess it'd be an opportunity to let the administration or the, Mark know or ask questions, but if it's going to come forward on the, on the agenda later, that's where we'll have to make a decision and a vote. Again, that's the first reading, and set the, the public hearing the second reading, so we will get this again. Plus, we'll get a public hearing that'll allow public to come and have input as well before we do the second reading, well, and the vote. So this just means today, well, I'll wait till the council meeting. But I just, kind of the process of where we're at right now is, is if we're moving it forward, if that's what council wishes to do, that'll be done at the council meeting, and then it'll come back to us through public hearing and further action. Any desires for amendments or changes? I made mine, and again, I'm not going to let that stand in the way, because I think if we, if we don't, I think we, when I look at the low-impact, and while I have not great concerns, it does resolve the difference of understanding when you talk about sparklers. And I don't, I don't want us to have consternation and debate over what's a sparkler or not, just because it shows two different things. And I don't think the others are, are, are to the extent to which consumer is, as we saw in the types and what we experience every year, so.
Department generally does a fantastic job of making the complex seem simple when they distribute that information to the public, so.
Kathy's question, how is people, how are people going to know, is, of course, as you said, the communication department does a great job. We have the newsletter, which many, many people are reading, and there are over 8,000 plus that are direct messaging to. And I think there's the seasons that are here on the, the days in which it's permissible by the state law. It gives us that opportunity as well, while people are, before they go out and purchase, so they know the days and consume who. So just, I think that, that's something we would start on, and of course, with public safety as well, and, and their response, so that people understand the last part of this, if there's items that, these, these are the outcomes if they, if there are. So I'll stop, see if there's any other thoughts or questions. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate the presentation, the information. It's helpful. This gets included with the work session records, correct? For if somebody wishes to obtain these materials, it's available through the city's website. Thanks, Mark. Manager Robinson, looking at the agenda, any other items you have for us before the end of this work session?
I do not have any other items to bring forward, unless council would like to discuss anything before we move to the next meeting.
We have about five minutes or so, if there's something that council wishes to bring forward before the regular agenda, if there's a comment or a question on something. I see none, so at this time, we'll close the work session, and we'll be back at 7:30 for the council meeting. Thank you all.
Call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Steelgrave? Fining?
Excused.
Germaine?
Here.
Stringham?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Hader? Mayor Clark?
Here. I'd ask we all please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guiding, guide our work together, give us wisdom to make the right decisions, your understanding to listen to each other and your compassion to promote the peace and welfare of this community.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Clerk, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda.
Mantra Robinson, are any amendments or changes to the agenda?
The administration has no amendments or changes to the agenda.
Any items from the council for changes or requests on the agenda? If not, Councilman Hader?
Motion to accept the regular agenda.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Steelgrave to approve the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Steelgrave? Germaine? Stringham? Felder? Hader? Mayor Clark?
Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda and for approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $930,816.47. 930-816.47.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda from council? Seeing none, are there any items on the consent agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Let's see a few additional people this evening. So consent agenda has multiple items and the council approved those with one motion. But if there's something there that you have a specific topic that you want to talk about, now would be the time to ask to have it pulled and it would then come at the end of the council agenda for discussion. So there's different items about purchases as well as meetings and appointments. Any items on the consent agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none. Councilman Felder?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Stringham, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Steelgrave? Germaine? Stringham? Felder? Hader? Mayor Clark?
Next item, please.
The next item is under Presentations, Communications, and Public Hearings. It's public hearing on ordinance 25-004. And there are no comments on file in the clerk's office.
Thank you. Mantra Robinson, anything additional before the public hearing or we can do it when it comes up later?
Nothing additional from the administration at this point.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for item 5395, public hearing on ordinance 25-004 and ordinance to amend Chapter 58 of the Code of Ethics. Any comments from those present here this evening on the public hearing comments? Seeing none. I know council have an opportunities where it goes as item. I want to say comments now. Close the public hearing. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under Council Action, item 5375, Proposed Ordinance 25-004 and Ordinance to Amend Chapter 58 of the Code of Ethics up for its first, up for its second reading.
Thank you. This is reading as long. Mantra Robinson, any comments on the action item? I know we had information within the packet regarding the proposed amendments.
The only thing to add, Your Honor, is this was basically the ordinance that addressed Chapter 58, Section 3 and 4, that had to do with to make some clarifications and some changes to private gains section as well as conflicts of interest that I think that we have discussed in our previous meeting. And that's the purpose of why we are amending this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council members regarding this? Councilman Felder?
Yes, Your Honor, I do have a comment regarding this item. I did speak with administration previously on this item. And I think that what we came to essentially was to develop an internal process and track and enforce this ordinance if and once it is adopted so that we have some transparency and enforcement of what the council passes here that we're all. that we're all abiding by the ethics policy as it's drafted, and that there's a mechanism in process for that. So as long as that, as long as that mechanism is present, I am, I'm comfortable with this moving forward.
I think that's a fair point and a good item to bring up, when we have items about the Ethics Committee or items of change to the Code of Ethics. Internally, we have mechanisms in place. We have an Ethics Commission as well that has the ability to weigh in if something was to arise, or there was question, or there was evidence of not meeting these points, it could go internally through the manager's office to that if needed, if not resolved. So I think that's a good point to make. Other comments on this item on the ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero four? Seeing none, it's on the, for an action item for council? Councilman Felder?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd move to place proposed ordinance number twenty-five dash zero zero four, an ordinance to amend chapter fifty-eight, sections three and four of the City Code of Ethics on the floor for its second reading.
There's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Steelgrave on item fifty-three seventy-five, proposed ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero four, ordinance to amend chapter fifty-eight of the Code of Ethics. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Steelgrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Twenty-five, ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero four, Ethics, Proposed Code of Ethics Ordinance, an ordinance to amend section fifty-eight dash three and fifty-eight dash four of chapter fifty-eight, Code of Ethics of the Code of the City of Monroe. The City of Monroe ordains.
Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilperson Steelgrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item fifty-three ninety-four, which is proposed public hearing, I mean, proposed ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero five for its first reading and scheduling of the public hearing.
Manager Robinson, any items, any comments on this item?
As, as we had during our work session prior to this meeting, the administration has presented you with a, with a proposed ordinance. As we've also had a previous meeting on, on the fireworks ordinance and how we needed it, what the, how, your guidance from council on how that ordinance should be done, and we've done the research, we've presented this ordinance, and we're hoping that council votes to count this as the first reading and schedule the public hearing for this ordinance at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for council members regarding this first reading? And as mentioned, if not, it would, and if approved, would move forward to a second reading and a public hearing. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, it's up for action for Councilwoman Stringham.
I would move to place ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero five on the floor for its first reading, and that the second reading and public hearing be scheduled for August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Stringham, supported by Councilwoman Germaine on fifty, item fifty-three ninety-four, first reading is scheduled, public hearing for ordinance, ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero five fireworks. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Steelgrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero five, chapter three forty-eight fireworks, an ordinance to add chapter three forty-eight fireworks of the Code of the City of Monroe.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is item fifty-three eighty-five, Acceptance of the Revised NRPA OST Youth Mentoring MOU.
Thank you. Manager Robinson, update on this?
Yes, Your Honor. This is an acceptance of a revised grant that we received through the work between the city and the Monroe County Opportunity Program. And it is something I think is a pretty wonderful acknowledgement for the work that's done there. And I think Director Cochran would like to speak a little more on the, the details of this program and how how we plan on using that money.
Mr. Cochran?
Yep. Honorable Mayor, City Council, Clerk Treasurer Lavoy, Mark Cochran, Assistant City Manager, Director of Economic and Community Development. So back in May two thousand twenty-three is when we first received word through the National Recreation and Parks Association that we were awarded funds to facilitate a youth mentoring program at the Opportunity Center. And so the city, being the NRPA member, we were able to apply, and we passed these funds through to M C O P and then partner with them on the delivery of the, on the program. This has been a great program that M C O P has facilitated in partnership with both Orchard High School as well as Monroe Public Schools, with the staff that M C O P has, working with youth in all of the school district. And so every quarter, you get a report from M C O P on the operations at the Opportunity Center. And every quarter, we see the delivery of this program in terms of the number of mentors that have been recruited and the number of students and youth who are being mentored through the program. Late last year, we had a visit by the National Recreation and Parks Association. They did a site visit for the grant, and they were very pleased with what they saw, and we had some great testimony from both mentors and mentees in that meeting with the NRPA. And they were so, I guess, pleased with the program that we have here in Monroe that at that time, they featured it in their national publication. But they also offered us another ten thousand dollars at the time, and so we extended the grant and accepted that, and the program continued. Well, the good, good work continues, and the NRPA, within the past two weeks, offered us another five thousand dollars to continue the program and keep it going. And so tonight, if you accept it and authorize the city manager to sign it, we'll accept the addition and the extension of the grant and continue supporting M C O P in the work that they're doing with Monroe Public Schools and the youth at the Opportunity Center.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Cochran? Seeing none. Thanks, Mark. This is on our action item for accepting of the revised. Councilwoman Germaine?
I'll move to approve the revised memorandum of agreement and to authorize the city manager to sign the updated agreement and authorize the finance director to amend the budget for the increased award.
There's the motion from Councilwoman Germaine, supported by Councilwoman Steelgrave on item five three eight five, Acceptance of the Revised NRPA OST Youth Mentoring MOU memorandum of understanding. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Steelgrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
I have no further items this evening.
Okay, it's council comments. It's August. Councilwoman Steelgrave, comments this evening?
I do, Your Honor. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to wish a very happy anniversary to our mayor and his wife Val for fifty years of marriage.
Yeah, look at that. Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome. Also, I would like to thank our entire community for the amazing turnout that was yesterday at St. Mary's Park for the party in the park. We ended up running out of food, and we had to go get more, so we cooked a total of, I don't know, it was almost sixteen hundred hamburgers and hot dogs. We had face painting. We had our public safety there, and they sprayed, you know, the water on the fire truck. And the kids loved it. We had a bounce house, and so it was, it was really a good turnout, and I want to thank the City of Monroe and all our volunteers and everybody that came out yesterday to support it. And also, don't forget Thursday, music in the park is back for this week, and I think there's going to be a food truck on Friday. I'm not sure. Is there? Okay. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Germaine?
I want to let everyone know that the Health Department is offering measles immunizations. Just call them, make an appointment, especially with back to school starting very, very soon, unfortunately. And also, the Monroe County senior citizens, they, they're giving a senior caregiver and safety summit on Thursday, August fourteenth, at Leroy Hall. It's something that I wish I would have had before I took care of my sisters, and they offer all kinds of subjects about how to care for elderly adults at home care. So please sign up if you haven't already. August fourteenth, it's, starts at ten A M., and there's a lunch, and I believe it ends at one. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stringham?
I want to add a great job to Councilwoman Steelgrave and Tina Omaya for coordinating the party in the park, and it was great. I was able to go down and, for part of it, just to see, and it was a lot of people down there. There was a lot of community involvement in the city for their support in that, so I think that was great. This Saturday is the cleanup of the river, so if you haven't signed up already, you can sign up on the website to participate in that. And then Thursday will be the crosswalk at Borges and Elm being repainted. So I encourage everyone to just be patient. The road will be closed down for twenty-four hours, and it does impact a lot of people coming through Elm, and it does impact part of our precinct, Precinct Five, with the increased traffic going through the community, but it's twenty-four hours. So just please show patience, and let's let it dry before we do anything with any of the barriers. Thank you.
Councilwoman Felder?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank the Bike and Pedestrian Committee for their recent work following up on the classifications of e-bikes, and also the Public Safety Department for the recent enforcement and education round that they did in the downtown to follow up on some of the complaints that we were getting regarding bicycles on the sidewalks. I think that comes hand in hand with an increasing effort on our part and the investments that this council is making to create a non-motorized infrastructure that is hospitable to bicycles being on the street, and I hope that we continue making those investments into the future. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Hader?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to congratulate you, Your Honor, and for your fifty years of marriage. Congratulations. And I'd like to recognize the six students who last Friday completed the AFL-CIO Pathway to Apprenticeship Program. They gave up four weeks of their summer, eight hours a day, three weeks at the Monroe County Community College. But more importantly, last week, we spent the entire week doing our extreme home makeover. And those students worked on a young gentleman's house who was a disabled veteran. They were able to do a duct cleaning, a, install a new hot water heater, new central air, back stairs, front fence, gravel driveway, painted the entire house, upgraded the electrical completely, and did plenty of cleanup and landscaping. So I want to recognize those kids. Oh, I say kids, they're young people. Jared Haynes, Amber Jellandoni, Hunter McLaughlin, Esteban Gonzalez Flowers, Dylan Lawrence, and Brian Valencia Jimenez. And I'd also like to remind everybody that coming up just a few weeks away, we have our Labor Day festival and parade. If anybody's willing or wanting to participate in the parade, get with me or look us up on the Monroe-Lenin Way Central Labor Council on Facebook, and I would love, or looking forward to seeing anybody Saturday through a recent cleanup. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. Congratulating me, may want to congratulate my wife to maybe putting up with me all these times. Maybe that's a, I'll share those comments with her. I'm sure she's watching, so we'll see. But I appreciate it. You know, this, this past two weeks, our sister city, which is with Hof Japan, the five international students were here from our sister city. They're coming to a close on Thursday to go back. They're actually having a little farewell party tonight. They usually do it night before, but this is an opportunity they had to meet together and meet with our students who went to Japan, came back, and they came back on the same plane, so that was really an opportunity. And I always want to thank the host families. I had ten host families because the students live with one host family for the first week, and another host family the second week, and our chaperones, Calum Chevix, that, that took our students there and also enjoyed the opportunity to visit Japan for their first visit. I know it's before the, it'll come after the next meeting, but sometimes you wait too long and you miss your opportunity. But the Ducky Dash will be downtown again this year on August twenty-first. Most, almost all, if not most, businesses downtown have flyers in their windows, opportunity to, I would say, put your money on the dock, I guess, to see who comes in first down there and up through tenth. It's a really great event, though, and it's also night when there's a concert in the park usually, so the idea is that it, you can go from one to the other, so hopefully that's on your list. I want to take a minute to congratulate Councilwoman Germaine through the Michigan Municipal League, which we have a great partnership. They have many training opportunities and learning experiences, and Councilwoman Germaine put in for the Women's Leadership Program through the Michigan Municipal League and was accepted. So she'll be busy coming here at thirty, the end of August, and on through a few weeks, and, as she participates in that. So congratulations. It's, it just falls in line with others in our, in our council who have taken opportunities for training programs through the Elected Officials Academy to make ourselves more knowledgeable and better as we come through the tasks that come before us. And it's not just the council because Clerk Lavoy went through the Women's Intensive, right? And Dr. Julie Everly also went through the League's Project sixteen fifty, which was a Women's Leadership Program, and great educational as well as bringing back information for how we conduct our business. So those are my comments for this evening. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy?
I just have one. It's a reminder to city residents that we do not have an August election, so we won't be conducting one tomorrow. You don't need to show up at the precincts. But we will be shortly starting to send communication about the November election, so you'll be seeing that soon. But just a reminder, no election in the City of Monroe tomorrow.
Thank you. Manager Robinson, any comments this evening?
The only comment I'll make is, you know, congratulations to, to Councilwoman Germaine. But I want to also mention congratulations to our mayor, and I don't know if any people know, but he was submitted for, for the Mayor Michael A. Guido Award, Leadership Award. They give out one a year from the Michigan Municipal League, and I, you know, he's the one that was chosen this year, and I think he's very deserving. I feel especially lucky since I worked for Mayor Michael A. Guido when he was in Dearborn, and now I'm working for Mayor Robert Clark here in Monroe, and it's, I think it's pretty cool that he's receiving an award that's named after a former mayor who I knew. And I just, congratulations, well deserved, and he'll be receiving that in September at the, at the conference in September from the Michigan Municipal League. So I just wanted to congratulate him.
Thank you. So comments from those present here this evening. Next is their citizens' comments. If there's comments from those present here this evening, please come forward, state your name, your jurisdiction of residence, and certainly your entire address, just where you reside. And be just be mindful of the, kind of the rules of the chamber for three minutes, and, and I think that's it. Come forward, please, name and jurisdiction.
Congratulations, Robert.
No, thanks.
The oldest, Slover, two eleven North Macomb Street. Those at the work session know what I'm going to say, but because Pat Lewis wasn't here, I want to say it again. So I'm not, I'm, this is about the painting the crosswalks, and I'm not against that at all. I think it's a good idea. My suggestion, though, would be to paint the two white lines on either side of the crosswalk. Most people probably don't know that there's glass beads in those usually, and the glass beads help that line to be reflective. And just within the last week, I've read two things where the state of Florida and the state of California are making cities remove their painted crosswalks because they're not in compliance with the uniform traffic codes. So I think if you painted those white lines on there, you'd be in compliance with the traffic code, and then what's painted in between is just incidental, I would think. The other concern I've had for a number of years, the painted crosswalk in front of St. Mary's Church. I think if somebody gets hit there, injured, or God forbid, killed there, the city needs to just take out the checkbook. Because when the lawyer comes up and says, why have you painted a crosswalk that's fifty or sixty feet west of a signaled crosswalk, I'd say the city's in trouble. You can't stop people from walking, crossing there on their own, but once you've painted that crosswalk, you've given them permission, and I don't think the city needs to give permission to cross fifty or sixty feet from a signaled crosswalk. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, come forward, name and jurisdiction of residence. Welcome.
Gloria Rafco, one twenty-
Gloria Rafco, 127 Borges. I've been here on numerous occasions about the house next door and the weeds. Well, two really bright females in the building department, I've talked to, like, a couple weeks, talked to them a couple times, and they sent a crew out that did a fantastic job. I mean, they swept the sidewalks, everything. It looks great. The weeds are, this was two weeks ago, and they're this high again. So I doubt if they're coming back right away. But they did behind the garage, they did all over the place. Because of that, we've had some rodents lately, and I don't know if you can do anything about that. But they, I've just had a couple. My son does something with them. He takes them somewhere. He's not shooting them. And we have a neighbor that has had eight rodents, one after the other. And she, unfortunately, has no family here, so she's hiring people that have to come and take them away. It's very costly for her. And we feel bad about it, but I don't know what can be done. Weeds are weeds, and I guess that's where they live, but they don't need to live in the city. So, and I spoke to somebody in the office at the end of the week, and she put the information to the city manager, who was on the phone this morning, very, very quick. I'd like to thank you very much for what you've done, and the neighborhood appreciates it, not just a couple houses. We have people walking down Borges all day long, all night long, going to different events at the park, and they always make comments about, who's going to clean this up? Who's going to do this? I guess you have to look at policies and think, what can you do to these people that leave a house for five years? Everybody's shaking their head, but I don't know what can be done. But on the other hand, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this, but I'm on the board at the community center, and I'd like to thank you for this youth monitoring. I'm sure they, down there, everybody at the staff would appreciate a thank you, because it's a great program down there. If you, if you don't, if you're not invited, just come at any time and see what they're doing. There's activities for kids and adults all the time. So thank you, and congratulations in you, too. And who else? Maybe the manager should get something if he keeps working for these people. He's learned a lot, so give him something.
Thank you, Gloria. You know, I just, as I, and Manager Robinson has been aware of this, we, the council's been aware of the challenge you have in your neighborhood for everybody that's on Borges Street. Unfortunately, we have a property owner who is just not willing to comply as well at all and is not present. We have gone to court. We have gone through the processes that we are permitted to do, and we'll continue to go back and have to cut the grass and make sure that's short because of the, you know, as you say, it just attracts things you don't want, whether it be rodents or something else. But I know that Manager Robinson, he just talked about that here at the end of last week, because it's still ongoing, and I know that he was over that way himself, looking at some items. So we'll stay on it. And of course, as we do those, for those that wonder, oh, we're doing it for free. No, we're not, because we, we do bill, and we understand that at some point, the house will be moved forward, but there'll still be a debt to be owed on that. So it's not the best circumstance, but we have gone through that. So Manager Robinson will be here. If you have questions or comments for him. Gloria?
This wasn't an issue before, but the back basement window is broken out.
Okay.
So that's where I'm thinking a lot of critters are hanging out in the house, and the roof is caving, so there's lots of water in there.
So on the window, I'm sure we can get back over there and, of course, and make sure it's safe. It has to be safe and boarded up. There's something else that will get put on the ticket, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks for the additional information. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir. Name and jurisdiction.
Andrew Duomo, City of Monroe. I know I don't get to come to meetings in person as often anymore. I do catch up on YouTube, and I'm a little behind, so maybe I'm a little late in addressing this, but I want to talk about e-bikes. I know a couple of weeks ago, there was a work session where that was discussed. Mayor Clark, you might have anticipated I'd talk about this. I go by your house just about every day, see you, see you quite a bit. First, I just kind of want to give up points of why they're such a, basically a good thing to have in the community. For one, it saves households money. I, I have, it's myself, my wife, and three kids, so household size of five, which I don't know for certain, but I would guess that's above the average. And we're a one-car house because of my e-bike. We used to be a two-car house, so that is a vehicle taken off the road, easing, easing, you know, the burden on the city's infrastructure, saving us a lot of money. If you look at the estimates of annual cost of car ownership, now, we usually drive beaters, so we're probably not way up there. But still, this is the third year now I've had my e-bike, and it's probably paid for itself many times over by eliminating one of our vehicles. It's getting, it's getting people out and exercising, you know, even if it's not, you know, vigorous exercise, because the motor does a lot of the work, it's getting people's joints moving, it's getting them out in the community. That's a, and it really builds community. There's, you know, how often do you think of your car commute as a potential social event? Probably never. But me, when I take my morning commute to the post office, there's a couple gentlemen who, they time their morning walk the exact same time my morning commute to the post offices. Couple older gentlemen who walk the Mark Wall Trail and see them every day. And, you know, when you're not enclosed in a metal frame and you're out in the open, you know, you wave and say hi to people. And I see them every single morning, and I've, to the point where I'm like, I got to figure out who these people are. So a couple of days ago, I stopped and introduced myself, learned their names, they learned my name. And I have a couple more acquaintances now, and what do you know, later that same, very same day, I saw one of them at the bank. So we got to chat a little bit while we waited for a teller, you know? And those, you know, those little things, I'm sure happen all the time. You know, again, that's, that's not, certainly not, you don't meet strangers in a car commute. And then, you know, so I would hope that all members of council and staff can, you know, have an attitude towards e-bikes that, you know, where you could, without apology, say, we want more of this. We want to see more people out. And, you know, I understand there's conflicts, and, you know, I understand my e-bike, it's one of the ones with the, like, the four-inch, the fat tires, and the batteries are heavy. So I think my e-bike is probably 70, 75 pounds, around that. So it's a pretty heavy bike. I understand that there's a large difference between a pedestrian and me on an e-bike. You know, even just a regular bike, you know, there's a difference between a pedestrian and a traditional bike rider. So, you know, I understand those differences, and we need to take those conflicts in mind. But then I also want to point out that, while there's a difference between a pedestrian and a traditional bike rider, and then a difference even between a traditional bike rider and an e-bike rider, those differences are dwarfed by the difference between an e-bike rider and a car. And there's, you know, I ride in the road most of the time, because my e-bike goes about 25 miles an hour, but I'm sure I'm in the minority. I'm sure your average e-bike rider is not comfortable being in the road, even on roads that have bike lanes. And, you know, so I, Mayor Clark, you had said in a work session maybe a couple months ago, and I was pleased to hear you say it, that this is something to be managed, not restricted. And I hope that continues to be the attitude we, you know, approach e-bikes with, because I think it is absolutely a good thing for community members and, you know, eases burden on city infrastructure, saves people's pocketbooks. So I know I'm being liberal with my three minutes, so I apologize, but thanks, I just wanted to give my two cents. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew.
And I did get here on an e-bike, by the way.
Thank you for your comments. And I guess, I know the council's had initial discussions, but by no means have we come to what we might be looking at in e-bikes. I don't think anybody here doesn't support e-bike. It's really, how do you manage, and how do you find the space for, that's compatible for all? And, and I was walking the other day, and you were on your bike as you went by in the street. And so how do we make it so it's, everybody feels comfortable and safe is what we're trying to accomplish? And I know the administration's working on some things that will come back to council. One thing we learned in our last discussions about opportunities regarding e-bikes and use of our lanes is, you know, if we come with a proposal, it requires a public hearing. So there'll be opportunities for those that are riders and those that are walkers. Those and how we find the space to do that based off what administration comes back for us in the future. It's not on Sunday, so, so, but I appreciate you being here. Other comments from those present here this evening? Public comments? Yes, sir.
Elliot James, 633 Stone Street. I see that the city done a wonderful job going down Third Street, paving it, but they've done a hard left turn right there on the, on Winchester. I understand that they put water lines further down Third Street, and they, they have to settle, but I was wondering, when are they going to finish that area?
As you go east of Winchester, correct?
No, I'm talking about east, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've chatted about before, right?
Yes.
So I don't particularly have that answer. I'm looking at the administration. I know that we're talking about how we do the repairs that are there, and the width of the road and the parking space, that's some of the conversation we had before in the one section. I don't know if you have an update, Manager, or for?
I don't have an update on, on when, but I know the when will correspond to when we have a water project and when the water project and the roads, we don't tear out and redo a road, and then two years later, tear out a road to do a water project. And I don't know, do we have any updates on that, Barry, or the water's done? Do you have any?
Council approved the contract, so.
Okay, so it sounds like the contract is out for bid for the completion of that. Mr. James, if you would, I know, well, I know you already have Mr. Robinson's phone number, so, and just maybe connect so we can look at what the timeline is. So you have awareness for that?
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you for your time. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir. Oh, Representative Bruck, come up, please. I didn't see you sitting over there.
Thank you. Representative Will Bruck, Erie, Michigan. So I just want to say a few things. Say, a few weeks ago, I had a real nice tour of the Lake Erie Transit. Compliments to Councilwoman Germany, and, and then I just wanted to give some kudos to the city for the parade and all the police support. Every corner had somebody from, from Chad's department there, and that was, that was very nice. It was a good parade, and everything went well, and a good, fair week. And then I was here for the SEMCOG check, so that was great to see Jones Road Corridor moving forward or getting money to move forward. So that's huge, huge thing, and seen a lot of Facebook comments, very positive. Not that that really matters, so, social media, but definitely a lot of, lot of positive comments about Jones Road, so that was really good to see. And then we were able to petition the state in the budgetary process for the grade rail separation there on Elm. So we'll see in a couple months where they go. They said give them one to three months, so sometime in that timeframe, hopefully we get some feedback on that. But I think it went really well and very positive with that project moving forward, or at least hopefully getting some state funding to supplement all the other funding that's been given thus far for that project. So real good, and otherwise, that's really all I had to say.
Representative Bruck, thank you for coming. You come frequently, and we appreciate that, get updates. I appreciate the follow-up on the, our grade separation for potential additional funds. I, I know that the Manager Robinson is probably going to get you, hold of you regarding that, some updates, where we're at with some other parts of that here, probably if not this week, next, just to give you that update as well in relation to next steps. And I want to thank you for attending the SEMCOG presentation here, which was last week. The city did receive $861,000 on a TAP grant, which is Transportation Alternative Plan, kind of ties to Andrew Duomo's question or comments yesterday, or, I'm sorry, today, earlier, was about La Pleasance Road and Jones Avenue reconfiguration, making it safer, making it non-motorized accessibility. And then hopefully, as we do the first phase, the second and third phase is through Monroe Charter Township to do and out to Bowles Harbor so we can have mobility as well. So thanks for being there for that presentation.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Thank you all, and congrats to, to you and Germany as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir.
Yes, how you doing today? My name's Scott Leble, 1500 Arbor Avenue. The reason why I'm here is to talk about the road on the construction project for the water. The water was completed, but we've received a couple letters about the contractor choice and getting them into, to complete the road. So it's, it's a gravel road right now, and it's becoming a safety hazard. We had a little bit of an accident. Somebody was going through there too fast and wound up on the, upon the sidewalk. So that's, that's, that's an issue, as well as the potholes. I live right on the zigzag on Arbor, and I'm just tired of, of cleaning my windows and, and the dirt. So I'm just wondering what the status is. And I've walked up and down the street here yesterday just to get some, some help, because it's not just me. You know, I pay, and I voted for the city levy for the roads, and it's like, this is what we getting? So that's, that's really my concern. So, yeah, that's, that's why I'm here.
Well, thanks for being here. I know there's been comments with the administration, with our staff as well, not from, not only yourself, but others, and it is a concern. Unfortunately, as we know, and I think some of the information's been sent by the manager about updates, and we have a contractor that we're, we're not satisfied at this point, but obviously, we want to, we have, we need to move forward and get this completed for the residents and the projects. For all the reasons that you've said, we recognize that. I know, I know, I talked to Manager Robinson, and, and Mr. Lewis was sending out updates to council of, you know, things that are, projects that are still fit, to be finished, and this is one, but there's more complications to yours, there's no question. So Manager Robinson, I don't know if you, if you have an update for the residents that may be here now, and then maybe some context for when we, they'll hear more.
Yes, Your Honor, I think it's important to note that we have sent out notifications, like five to date, about that. And even the last one that we did send out in, in the end of June was that the paving company was, was behind schedule due to weather permitting, due, due to the weather, as well as they had some equipment problems. But we have to remember, we also, they have a completion end date in our contract. They're not violating our contract unless they go past the, the September 30th end date. Now, the actual completion and doing the paving is really a three-to-five-day job, and I know that I've talked to Director Lewis. Director Lewis has, and his engineers have, spoke to this company, and they're saying within the next two or three weeks, they should be out there doing it. That's always an interesting thing, because they've said that since the middle of June, but we are staying on top of them, and, and I'm satisfied that our engineering staff and crews are keeping up with them. And we, there's not really a whole lot of legal recourse we can do regarding this, as they are still in the contract period, and the finish date of the project is September 30th.
So two things, I guess, I have to say, and I know the council has these feelings. We've had, we've been fortunate for many contractors we've had over the last few years, and then one comes up that we have to, I'll just say, take pause on. And it does, we do think about that in the future when contracts come up again. I, I was trying to remember the one here years ago, it doesn't matter the company's name, but they, we did not accept projects from them for the very reason, they didn't finish things. They didn't finish it well. When you talk about the, the skirting with the, with the grass and dirt and growing, so we do make note of that, and that, that doesn't help you now, I understand that. But it does make us think about how future projects are bid, as well as what we'll receive. Second part, I guess I have, and I know this is for the administration, and there's, there's always things to do, but I think this may be an item, because we're still not, they're not starting this week and unlikely next week, is that we make sure we drive down, and I know the staff has done this, but to watch for those, they know they compress the gravel once, and that, that's not going to last forever, we know that. So we can continue to make, monitor the road, try to make it the best that we can, so it's not a, a great inconvenience. I know it's an inconvenience, and it won't be, it'll be an inconvenience until it's paid. We understand that. I know there was discussion of how, when that might come, so I'm sure if you don't have Manager Robinson's phone number? have Manager Robinson's phone number, before you leave, make sure you get it. I know you can share that with your residents as well that live around you, but if there's a question of, and we'll have an update as we get manager updates, that makes sure we put it back out to the residents as well, like the previous communications.
Sounds good, thanks.
I really great, appreciate you coming here to let us know, and it's not that we don't know, but it's nice to hear it, too, and, and maybe there's some things we can help accommodate through this next couple of weeks or so.
Sure.
Appreciate it much. Other comments from those present here, yes, sir? Name and jurisdiction of residence, please.
Don Middleton, 1411 Arbor. I'm here with Scott. One thing I would like to recommend, now, on the block south of us, they did the water line, and they did the pavement of the street, but they cemented it, and I understand now we're going to get paved. But when they were doing that cement, doing all that work down there, one thing they could have done that would have helped was bring a water truck in and spray down areas to keep the dust problem at ease, because those people went through a lot of dust problems. And you got, in my area, someone moved out, we got some older people that have problems with asthma and things like that, and dust isn't good for it. So we need to look at that part of the job, too, because I am not too happy myself because of the delays. Now, this is the first I heard about the project going to September the 30th. Well, we should have never started it till we found out that it was going to be feasible, you know, so they got in there, they did the work on the curbs, and like you said, some of the work they're doing along the curb where they should do the grass and stuff, you know, better seed it, not too good, a lot of weeds growing up, and some people aren't keeping the weeds down, and it looks terrible. But we need to do something about the dust. When they were doing that, I talked to some of the supervisors that represent us, and they said, well, they're contractors. I understand that, but a contractor works for us.
That's right.
And we have supervisors that should be giving them directions, that they need to do certain things, and I didn't see them doing it.
I appreciate your comments, and I know the manager takes notes when he has these, you as well, please get with Mr. Robinson if you, so you can exchange the number if you have some additional comments. I know that the timeline is, it didn't, wasn't as was originally planned, but when you have different contractors and the water gets done, which is, obviously, we need to get done first, and then the, the, the road contractor was separate, to do it, it was, it comes to bidding sometimes, in this particular case is, it comes down to a cost also of, you know, six figures of doing it in a fashion different that would have cost. So we take those factors in, but that's just, I don't, that's, we're past that. I think how we can make things as best we can here to, till we can complete the project, please make sure Mr. Robinson has your phone number, okay? That way, if there's questions you have, not opposed, you're welcome to come back to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Other comments from those present here this evening? Any further comments? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn. Councilman, or Councilwoman Stillgrave, supported by Councilman Hader to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stillgrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Stringham?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader? Mayor Clark?
Yes.